Good morning, everybody. We'd like to call this public meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And we'd like to call up Jim McHugh to lead us in the pledge. Mr. McHugh is a veteran of the Navy and was in the conflict in Vietnam. So, thank you, Mr. McHugh.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Veterans may hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. McHugh. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last commissioners' meeting?
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Okay, seeing that there is no one, we'll move into the first part of the meeting, which is a proclamation. So, we are presenting a proclamation declaring the month of September 2024 to be Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in Lackawanna County. I'm going to read this proclamation into the record, and then we'll ask our Behavioral Health Administrator, Mickey Drutchel, to come up and say a few words. Whereas suicide is a leading cause of death in the United States and in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, one person dies by suicide every four hours, making it the second leading cause of death for ages 15 through 34, and the fourth leading cause of death for ages 35 through 54. And whereas nearly 5 million people in the United States have lost a loved one to suicide, and each member of our community is valued and irreplaceable, and talking openly about stress and psychological health builds trust, reduces barriers to care, and enables early intervention, and local and statewide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged to the maximum extent possible. And whereas the Lackawanna-Susquehanna Behavioral Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program works with community stakeholders to assure that each citizen has access to mental health services and mental health crisis intervention to spread the message that help and resources are available. Whereas local and statewide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged to the maximum extent possible. Now therefore, we, Bill Gahan, Matt McGloin, and Chris Chirmack, Commissioners of Lackawanna County, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in Lackawanna County. And I'll turn it over to Mickey Drutchel.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
McGloin, Gahan, and Chirmack, and colleagues. Thank you for recognizing that September is Suicide Prevention Month, and we are grateful for the proclamation and your ongoing support in raising awareness for this important issue. There are nearly two times as many suicides as homicides in the United States annually. Suicides claim the life of over 2,000 Pennsylvanians every year as well. Suicide affects individuals across ages, race, gender, denomination, sexuality, education, and income. September is an important time to honor and remember those we have lost to suicide, recognize the tremendous impact that these losses have had on family members, friends, colleagues, and our communities. We acknowledge the resilience of individuals who are experiencing and overcoming suicidal thoughts and attempts. In 2020, the federal government established a three-digit nationwide suicide crisis helpline and lifeline, 988, which is, you are able to call or text toll-free. That number's 24/7/365 is a confidential line, and 988 can also connect you to local resources if someone is in distress and you don't know what to do. Talking about suicide and asking someone if they are thinking of killing themselves will not put the idea into their head, rather, it can save their life. Anyone can have a positive impact and prevent suicide. Learn about warning signs, check in with friends, family, and peers, listen, let them know you are there, share messages of hope, because every life has value and meaning, and remember you matter. Thank you. Additionally, we have some 988 signs in the back of the room that we were able to purchase through some 988 funding for community members. If you would like them, please take them on your way out. And thank you again, Commissioners.
Thank you, and we'd ask you to come up, and we'll...
Absolutely.
Alliance, and she's a great help keeping that organized. And I don't know how many members, I think we're up to at least 150 members, and so it's good. It's good information for everybody, keeps everybody on the same page. And even today, I was just in the room next door, our Veterans Affairs people are taking a training that's offered by the VA Hospital, and it's for veterans suicide to recognize. It's called the SAVE Training. And I know she's going to, interested in coming to our meeting, so it's all good stuff. You know, we lose, I think the numbers are 22 veterans each day to suicide, so help us recognize, you know, when they're here in our office if we can, and so it's all for good cause. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, here's somebody's phone.
That's fine, I'm sorry. My gosh.
I don't want to take all your...
Nobody does.
Okay, Resolution 24-0236.
This is approving the current payables, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the following payables: Lackawanna County's General Fund numbers, 376116-376721 inclusive totaling $2,496,793.13. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $9,692,991.16. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0225.
This is approving a juvenile probation grant, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved a Juvenile Court Judges Commission Grant for the fiscal year '24 through '25 for the Department of Juvenile Probation in the amount of $247,306. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, September 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Chief Juvenile Probation Officer, Ms. Melissa Pavlaski.
Good morning.
Morning.
Since July 2013, Lackawanna County Juvenile Probation Department has participated in the Juvenile Court Judges Commission Service Grant. This grant assists our department with the implementation and development of the Juvenile Justice System Enhancement Strategy. JJSES is a statewide approach to develop a unified level of service for youthful offenders and build stronger relationships with families, schools, and community-based providers. This innovative approach helps reduce recidivism and uses evidence-based practices when treating juveniles while protecting the community. These strategies have been utilized for the past several years and will continue to approve the delivery of services at no additional expense to our department or the county. This grant is in the amount of $247,306.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0226.
Entering into a license agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a license agreement with the Scranton Cultural Center, 420 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, on behalf of the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau for the September 2024 tax sale. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Tax Claim Director, Ms. Barb Lenity.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a contract between the Scranton Cultural Center and the Tax Claim Bureau for rental of the theater to conduct the September 23 upset tax sale.
Any questions for Mrs. Lenity?
Barb, there was roughly 350 bidders sign up in May, right? Do you see it getting to that number again, or...
We, bid registrations closed. We're at 147. The upset sale is always less, the judicial sale. So, with the bidder registration fee, we collected $5,145 for the registration fee, which we can put towards the $1,000 for the rental.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
You too. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0228.
This is authorizing Lackawanna County's RASAVOJO Grant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the District Attorney's Office of submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the 2024-2025 Lackawanna County Victim/Witness Rights and Services Act Victims of Juvenile Offenders Crime Grant in the amount of $127,046 and $23,553. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is District Attorney's Victim and Witness Supervisor, Ms. Donna Cirillo.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you today? I'm here to speak on this grant, which is a non-competitive grant from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. It has been in our office for over 20 years. It's a non-competitive grant, and in conjunction with the Victims of Crime Act Grant that we received from PCCD, it helps supplement salaries for about seven people in our office.
Thank you. And during the work session, you told us how long you've been working for the county for, which is how many years?
Thirty-one and a half.
Thirty-one and a half. How about a round of applause for that?
Started when I was 12.
She started when she was 12, she said, if you didn't hear that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0229.
This is authorizing the filing of applications for the Local Share Account Grant Program. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby authorized the submissions of grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Monroe County Local Share Grant Program on behalf of the various agencies as detail. Number one, St. Anne's Passionate Monastery of Scranton, $205,440 for Sloan Street sidewalks; the Lackawanna Historical Society, $146,736 for accessibility improvements and stormwater mitigation; the Ballet Theater of Scranton, $42,393, the 50th anniversary of the Nutcracker Ballet Equipment; the Indo-American Community of Scranton, $86,014 for purchase of equipment for local support and outdoor cultural events and festivals; the Everheart Museum, $297,413 for roof replacement; the VFW Post, $5544 in jessup, $111,844 for roof and boiler replacement; Meals on Wheels of NEPA, $331,868 for high-efficiency commercial food operation; the Scranton Tennis Club, $150,150; court and site improvements and ADA accessibility; the Sturgis Iron and Hose Company, $33,233 for site pavement and ADA improvements. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to assign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Monroe County Local Share Account Grants. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Kristin Magnotta.
Thanks, Chief. Good morning, Commissioners. As Chief Jeffers had mentioned, this legislation is a requirement of the LSA Monroe Grant Program, which is the local share account, also known as the gaming money. None of these listed respondents are eligible on their own to submit these grant requests, so they must go through the county. The benefit is allowing small groups and agencies, including nonprofits, to be able to receive grant funding through our sponsorship and assistance, and also, it's at no cost to the county. We actually receive 5% of any awarded funds to provide this administration of these grants. And this, just, the funding, though it's the local share account, comes through the Commonwealth Financing Authority and DCD, and the deadline for all LSA Monroe projects is September 30th, so this is time-sensitive.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions?
And just to clarify, Kristin, we don't advertise this. This is something that, it's whoever really comes to us, right? It's strictly up to the municipalities and up to the county.
That is correct, and many people in the community know that we do this as a pass-through to support them, and next meeting, we will have, I think approximately, eight more for you, so. And just to give you a rough estimate, that's always nice, is just in these nine, it totals one point, over $1.5 million into the community of folks that wouldn't be eligible, and then also brings in over $77,000 worth of admin for the county.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion, a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0231.
This is approving the Office of Youth and Family Services Professional Service Agreements. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Professional Service Agreements for the fiscal year '24 through '25 with the following: the Bradley Center and Tor Youth and Family Services, adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the All IFS Assistant Administrator, Ms. Carrie Browning.
Hi. Good morning. The professional service agreement with Children's Home of Reading Youth and Family Services for '24-'25, it's to provide two bedholds for children involved with the Juvenile Probation and Office of Youth and Family Services at a per diem of $388.50, which is 100% county funding. However, if a child is placed in one of these beds, there is a reimbursement of 60% from the state, and this is a reduction from four beds to two beds from last year. We're going to see how that goes throughout this year, and then we'll reassess in the following year. Also, the Bradley Center provides residential services for dependent and delinquent youth. The per diem for these beds is $498.73, and it is reimbursed by 60% by the state.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Browning? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0232.
This is accepting a phone proposal from Icon. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the phone proposal from Icon Technologies of Carbonell, Pennsylvania, for the 3-CX installation to replace the county's NEC phone system. Update to cover 25 buildings and 10 magistrate offices with the equipment installation to cost $253,318.75 in the yearly support and subscription costs of $49,432.50. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Chief Information Officer, Mr. Mike Brown.
Good morning, Commissioners. This proposal is brought to us by Icon. We actually surveyed various different organizations for phone services. Since our phone plan will expire at the end of this year, and the organization that does that is no longer doing that business, so we needed to find a solution quickly and promptly. This icon is a local business to Lackawanna County, so we wanted to make sure that we gave an opportunity to local business, so we can actually go from there. The amount of $253,000 is, on a large scale, not to exceed. We're hoping that we can bring the cost down based on the types of phones and utilizing our cell phones that we currently have as a pass-through. And the annual support will hopefully reduce, because once we actually get our local IT telecom person, we should be able to cut that cost in half of the annual subscription.
Are there any questions for Mr. Brown? Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0235.
Entering into a medical assistance transportation agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into a renewal of an agreement with the County of Lackawanna Transit System for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program for fiscal year '24 through '25 with a rate of $21.55 per trip. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here's the Director of Colts Shared Ride Operations, Ms. Kelly Maton.
Good morning. As we all know, an efficient and reliable transportation system can enhance people's quality of life. With that said, the MA program plays a vital role in the community of Lackawanna County as it provides non-emergency medical transportation for medical assistance recipients who do not have any means to any other transportation available to them. Statistically speaking, in the '23-'24 fiscal year, close to 27% of our ridership was through the Medical Assistance Transportation Program, which consists of over 34,000 trips for the residents of Lackawanna County. The Medical Assistance Transportation Program will provide the type of transportation that is least expensive while still meeting the needs of the clients along to adhering to the standards and guidelines of the Department of Human Services.
Are there any questions? No questions, but just a comment. I was at the Senior Expo, which I know that we saw each other at, and while I was there, it was at the mall at Seamtown, and while I was there, a woman had stopped me, and she was telling me she had an issue with her husband and that you and your team were absolutely phenomenal to her and helped her, so she couldn't say enough good things about you and Colts and everybody there, so, thank you.
It's nice to hear good things. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0234.
These are appointments to the Workforce Development Board. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Workforce Development Board with terms to commence October 1, 2024, and expire September 30, 2027. Thomas Donahue, Vice President and General Manager of Lamar in Scranton, sitting as a Business Representative. William Cockrell, Greater Scranton Central Labor Union Council Representative and Treasurer, sitting as the Union Representative. Eric Assodom, President and CEO of the Northeastern Pennsylvania Industrial Resource Center, sitting as a representative of economic development. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners is hereby appoint the following individual to the Workforce Development Board with a term to commence October 1, 2024, and continue through September 30, 2027. Mr. Kenneth Resner, he is the Assistant Regional Director for the Northeast Region for the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry Bureau of Workforce Partnership and Operations. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question.
Just on the question, I know these are all good people, some, the new appointment. I have no idea who that is personally. I was not part of the decision, so I'm going to abstain from the vote just because I was not part of these decisions.
Okay, on the question, two things. Number one, and I think I recapped this before, but we put out a notice to the public months and months and months ago, asking people who are interested in serving on any boards, authorities, or commissions to send in your letters of interest or your resumes. A ton of people did. Commissioner Chirmack, myself, and Commissioner McGloin have access to all of those resumes, letters of interests, and any information on these people. We also have access to any opening, any vacancy on the 32 boards, commissions, and authorities, so it's incumbent upon the Commissioner to provide a recommendation, if he so chooses, on who he thinks would be appropriate to serve on these boards. Virginia Torano, being in charge of workforce development, sent these up. Virginia, if you want to come up and speak on these people and the process of it, and how it works in terms of the category, come on up and do that. But there's, anyone's free to make any decision, but we can't wait around for recommendations from Commissioners. This has been going on for months. Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, I have to apologize because I just had a bout with the flu, and I'm back after two days, so if I sound funny, that's the reason.
You look wonderful.
I sound like a frog.
You look wonderful.
The Workforce Development Board is made up of specific members as dictated by the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, the federal law that oversees workforce development. There are certain categories of individuals that have to be appointed to these board, to this board. 51% of the board has to be made up of private business and industry members, and there has to be three union representatives on the board. There has to be representatives from education, community, and economic development agencies, and so it's, but there is specific membership required for this board. These individuals, Mr. Donahue represents business, Mr. Cockrell is a union representative, and Mr. Assodom is representing economic development. Mr. Reisinger is a new appointee that is representing the PA Department of Labor and Industry. That is also a required appointment to this board.
Okay, thank you.
And I appreciate that, and I do have the list of applicants or people that applied for different boards and authorities, so I just wish that I had an opportunity to, you know, be a part of the decision or at least know who the applicants were, you know, that were being considered, that's all, so.
And not to, you could, you could sit down, thank you. Thank you, Virginia, for the explanation. Mr. Chirmack, you do have the opportunity to do that. All you have to do is let Commissioner McGloin and I know who you would like to be appointed to these boards. We all have access to the same information. So, if you would like to appoint somebody to the Workforce Development Board, to the Assessment Board, to the River, any of them, we've had months to look over these applications and resumes, give us your input, and we will consider it.
Certainly will. So, next work session, these were not on the work session, so I had no idea that these appointments were going to take place.
All you have to do is give us a list of the people who you would like to appoint, and we'll consider them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0237.
These are appointments to the Lackawanna County Assessment Board. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Assessment Board for one-year term to commence immediately and expire on September 30, 2025. Shirley Barrett of Archbold, Ms. William Nichols, William Nicholas of Jefferson Township. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners is hereby appoint the following individual to the Assessment Board for one-year term to commence immediately and expire in September 30, 2025. Mr. Martin Duffy of Scranton. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question.
On the question, so who, this is not in addition to, this is replacing than Mr. Jones, I'm assuming.
Correct.
So now, we're faced with a looming reassessment coming. The three individuals that have been on that board, Mr. Jones included, did a very good job and are very knowledgeable, and now we're pulling him off and putting someone new on. I don't know if that's such a good idea at this point, and I know we're going to have to start putting more people on eventually and adding to that.
I just, I'd like to speak about Mr. Duffy here for a moment. He's retired from the Lackawanna County Assessment Office. I believe he retired in 2021 after working 13 years. He was responsible for putting values on residential and commercial county properties as well as attending weekly hearings. He's also a recipient of a CPE license with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, so I personally felt, you know, Mr. Duffy was more than qualified to be appointed.
Oh, yeah, and I have no, no issue with Mr. Duffy, it's, it's just, I just, not in favor of removing Mr. Jones at this time.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0238.
These are appointments to the Lackawanna River Basin Sewer Authority. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna River Basin Sewer Authority. Mr. Thomas Wasquera of Region 4, Peckville, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2028. Andrew Hedges, an at-large pick from Tru, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2028. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Abstaining.
The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution... Resolution 24-0239.
This is an appointment to the Lackawanna County Literacy Committee. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Literacy Committee. Dr. Melvin Wolk of South Abingdon Township, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2027. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 18, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Abstaining.
The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. The next two are motions. The first is a motion to award the county prison roof replacement to Dunmore Roofing and Supply Company Incorporated, 158 Tag Street, Dunmore, Pennsylvania, 18512. The lowest responsible bid to cost $1,278,865. And here to speak on that is the county engineer Frank Suma.
Thank you, Commissioners. This agenda item is to award the construction of the, for the replacement of the Lackawanna County Prison Roof located at 1371 North Washington Avenue in Scranton. The existing roof is past its useful life and in need of replacement. The work plan calls for the replacement of approximately 80,000 square feet of EPDM roofing, including the installation of two additional inches of new insulation, bringing the roof's new R-value, an industry term for insulation efficiency essentially, from approximately 20 to over 30. So to be clear, getting that value higher is better, and getting above 30 is the design code criteria for the project. The contract will come with a 20-year, no-dollar-limit warranty, and per the contract, all work will be required to be completed within six months. We've conducted a public bid for the work, four bids were received, and Dunmore Roofing was the lowest qualified bidder at a price of $1,278,865. We've reviewed Dunmore Roofing's bid package. It's complete, compliant, and contains all required bidding documents. We therefore recommend the contract be awarded to Dunmore Roofing.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Suma? Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, I'm sorry, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Motion, this is, next one is a motion to award the tree removal and brush cutting at the former UGI plant located at Bridge Street and Cliff Avenue, Scranton, to BT Adams LLC, 235 Bardwell Road in Factoryville, Pennsylvania, 18419. The lowest and most responsible bid at $31,050. And here to speak on that is our Economic Development Director, Kristin Magnata.
Again, good morning. This bid, an ask-for-motion, originated from the Office of Economic Development in collaboration with UGI. They still, we have a lease on UGI property. In order for us to move forward with long-awaited plans to build a park on this property, one of the major things that we need to do is to clear both trees and brush on that property. So we did this in collaboration with maintenance and roads and bridges to be able to go through the bid process. You announced who the lowest and most responsible bidder was. This comes at a cost of $31,050. And to be clear, this longtime project for, whether it be Riverfront Park, Boomerang Park, it's been a number of things in the media so far, this will come out of what has been budgeted for over two years using American Rescue Plan dollars for this, both this park and this preliminary action that needs to be taken, not only for us to move forward with the park, but the next step is for UGI to do whatever remaining remediation they need to do to the property that they still own that we lease from them. So I ask for this motion because it's going to be a wonderful additional recreational opportunity for the people of Lackawanna County.
Absolutely. Any questions? Thank you. May I have the motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Would anyone like to address the board? Sure.
I would like to make some remarks about the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission and the responsibilities that are going to be put on those who were appointed to the The fact is, when we were at the public hearing.
Sir, I'm sorry, can you state your name for the record, please?
Frank Cirafini. When we were at the public hearing at the Masonic Temple, there were a number of people who testified. And obviously, from my experience, having been in office, the public utility would normally request, say, a 20% rate, they get it cut down to 10%. And then there's press releases, oh, we fought hard to cut the rate. The problem is, you see, we heard people, I don't know who was there of the commissioners, but we heard people state that they only flush their toilets very, very seldom, and after taxes and utilities, a woman had $135 a month for her family of two children, husband and wife. It's hard to live on that anymore. And I know that my sewer rate in music was $80 normally. Now it's $450 to $800. So that's a major jump. It's not the small jump that they try to express in their letter that they just put out. So I would hope that you could allow sewage meters to be put on our sewer line because we're paying based on water usage. And most of the water that I use goes either in a pool or to water the lawn or to wash the car or recently, power washing. So two people living in a home, I mean, I flush the toilet more often now than I ever did, of course, but at my age. But the fact is, I certainly don't use the amount of water that my sewer rate is being based on. Plus, Representative Gainer Colley had a video that showed the sewer plant's display of a door that opens up into a river during periods of heavy infiltration. It's nothing, the treatment is not produced. They don't produce any treatment. They just open up this gate, and sewage flows right into the river. So I believe the commission would have a real job now to examine how they operate, where their problems are, and perhaps recommend sewage meters to be made available or to allow people to put on their systems. That's my issue there. Plus, with the boards and commissions, I understand that it's a Democrat majority in the commissioner's office, but I filled out an application because I assumed there would be some opportunity, probably exaggerating myself, you know, kidding myself. But then I noticed that the outreach manager was Mr. Notary. Well, even though I like Mr. Notary, I happen to like the guy. He's from Old Forge, he's a pretty nice guy. But he showed that he was very partisan when he made the statement about the president. And I don't think that the boards and commissions were determined, were not determined by some partiality, and I can understand that, I probably would do the same thing. But Mr. Notary was not, in my opinion, the person who should be the outreach manager, even though I, you know, you don't have to fire him, but find a place for him because the partisanship that would take place in that position, in my opinion, would negate any opportunity for a Republican to ever be on a board and commission. And I don't know what the relationships are with the people who are appointed. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak and wish everyone opportunity to cut the taxes. One other thing, the prison. We had given Mr. Chirmack last year, you are not aware of this, that I'm aware, that I believe you're not aware of it, that we gave him information whereby the prison system has been overpaid for medical care to a point that could amount to almost $800,000 for services paid for, not received. And if a forensic audit or some kind of an audit internally could be made of their payments and the people who they had charged for, I think you would find a discrepancy there that might help you in your budget decisions. But I appreciate it very, very much, and wish you all the luck in the world because I know you have a very difficult job.
Thank you.
Is that for me?
Yes.
Thanks.
We didn't install the trapdoor yet, so you're safe.
Thanks, Frank.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Certainly.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I will be brief. I think we can all agree that we have a very big elec-
Sorry to interrupt you. Can you state your first and last name for the record?
Sure, Jeanie Jelarenzi. Okay. I think we can all agree that we have a big election coming up this year, probably the biggest one in our country's history. And there's always a lot of talk about transparency. Transparency in government is a very good thing. But I think if the people that say that mean it, then it's important to demonstrate that you actually do believe it. Commissioner McGloin was a delegate to the DNC. I believe that the commissioner's meeting was actually moved, the regularly scheduled one was moved so he could attend that. You went there, he went there supporting Biden and presumably cast a vote for Harris as she was the replacement. As someone who will be deciding issues that come before the board of elections, being a member of the board of elections, I've talked to a lot of people, myself included, believe that perhaps the ability to be impartial would be difficult. And therefore, I request that you recuse yourself from this position and allow the Court of Common Pleas to decide the replacement, giving that individual ample time to be able to be prepared for the issues that probably are going to arise as we've had, you know, contentious, contentious, excuse me, elections in the past. I think that the public, the voters, have a right to know who it is that is deciding issues, and I respectfully request that a recusal is given so that there will be ample time for one of the judges to appoint somebody to this role.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, Commissioners, thank you. Under the Election Code, the only time commissioners are required to remove themselves from the board is when their name is on the ballot and they are running for an office, or the office of commissioner is on the ballot, which neither is applicable in this case. So that is a decision the commissioner can make on his own. If he feels that there's a conflict, fine, if not, then that's up to him.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Commissioners, other business, Commissioner Chirmack?
Just to revisit our first thing today with the suicide prevention and Prevention Month, you know, and especially with veterans. I lost a very good friend this year that I've known for a very long time to suicide, and I think back, this person, I probably talked to this person almost every single day for 10 years, whether it was a phone call or a text. And I think back, if I missed a sign or, and I have no idea, I don't think so, and I know lots of other of our friends that said the same thing. So all I'm saying is, if you're a veteran or not a veteran, it doesn't matter, and you're experiencing difficulties and you need someone to talk to, the 988 number is a good number to call. If you're desperate, our 911 center is trained to take those calls. We have folks here at the county, call the county. So there's a ton of help out there locally here. And our VA people today going through the SAVE training, just, you know, even if they pick up one little thing on how to notice if somebody's having some kind of a problem that can help them, you know, get some help. So just remember, the 988 is out there, we have the signs going out, they're going to be in our parks, they're going to be all around. So, and if you know anybody that's struggling, don't be afraid to ask them. Are you thinking about killing yourself? You can't beat around the bush with that. So just be aware. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McGloin?
Thanks, Commissioner Gahn. Just want to say a couple of things. Had the opportunity last week to stop in over at the Boys and Girls Club in Scranton to say hello, and, you know, really incredible thing happened. They had the opportunity to team up with Comcast, and Comcast generously donated a $25,000 check to support the club's efforts in enhancing digital literacy. So really proud and honored to have been a part of that wonderful event. Not too long ago, had the chance to attend the Legislative Education and Advocacy Day at Mohegan Sun alongside a number of elected officials and community leaders. So it was really a fantastic opportunity to speak about the importance of building thriving communities and sharing ideas about strengthening our local areas. Commissioner Gahn touched on it earlier, but the joint senior expo at the Steamtown Mall was really a wonderful day and incredible event. And just being there and seeing the number of people there, it's really clear that the expo provided valuable resources and support to our seniors. So I just want to thank those departments in the county for setting up those informative stands and offering assistance to really help our seniors in the county thrive. And then last Sunday, you know, we had the opportunity to be at the Rail Riders' last home game for Fan Appreciation Day, where we were able to provide free tickets and food vouchers for families to enjoy that game. So what a really great opportunity it was to have a beautiful day. The sun was out. I think it was one of the best crowds that they had all year up there. So, and then, you know, Commissioner Gahn, myself, to be able to have our families up there on the field, really, really nice day to attend the regular season. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.